No, I shouldn't. We're at time.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City of Casa Grande study session. We'll call the meeting to order, and we have tonight a presentation and discussion related to the city's housing needs and supply study that we've been working on for a while, so it's good to see this come forward. And Mr. Tice, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Larry.
If I can just set a bit of context for the mayor and council and Mr. Mayor and members of the council, the mayor is absolutely right. Tonight, we, Mr. Tice will be presenting what I consider to be a combination of information and data that the elected body and many of the residents have been asking for for the last several months. One of those happens to be the data related to the, what I would consider to be the mix of our existing housing, what we've got in our community today. And as the mayor and council is aware, we've, I've had some discussions with several of you along the way in really trying to understand the scope of how that data would be presented, what would be included in any type of analysis. And as we, as I met with Paul and Mr. Wallace to talk about the presentation, we also recognized that there were, we were beginning to field questions related to the number of zoning cases, particularly in regards to multifamily and/or single plat lot type of rezones. And so I, tonight, Paul and his team has put together what I consider to be some very informative information and data that will, that really will cover and discuss the mix, the existing mix of our housing stock today, as well as we've taken it a step further and ultimately have aligned that with the zoning cases that have been considered over the last couple of years. And more importantly, Paul and his team have attempted to develop, develop some type of a demand versus supply scenario to give the council a context on where we're at with entitlements and just particular scenarios for projects in the pipeline. And so I'm going to hand the baton over to Paul here, but I, tonight, what I'm looking for is really some candid dialogue between the mayor and council related to the mix that we see, the mix that we're anticipating, and I want to get your perspective on that as to whether or not we want to maintain that, begin to modify that as a, as a staff. And the second component, and Paul will touch in a little more detail, relates to the approach that staff utilizes as we move forward with evaluating applications and projects that come in for consideration. And there are some existing goals within the general plan that Paul will reference in his presentation. So with that, Paul, I'll hand the baton to you and let you kick this off.
And Larry, if I can interject too, you know, we've had this conversation for a while now, probably eight months, nine months. And, you know, especially when the onset of all the R2 rezoning cases came through. And so trying to get an inventory of what we have, trying to understand what's the right mix, that was really the direction, I think, that came from council in terms of what we were looking for, so.
And I think you'll see that tonight in the presentation.
Good. All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Paul.
So thanks, Larry, for that context of the presentation. I appreciate it. So the mayor and council have all heard that we need to provide additional housing to address the housing needs of our residents, not only in Casa Grande, but across Arizona. So this study was undertaken to try to provide staff and the planning commission and city council some information on how much and what type of housing is needed to be constructed in Casa Grande over the next seven years and into the next two decades to, to meet the housing needs of our current and future residents. Let me see why this is not progressing here. Thanks, Stephen. Is it locked? New housing units are, for the most part, constructed by private developers and builders as they create new subdivisions for single-family homes, construct apartment complexes, develop manufactured home parks, and build-to-rent projects. This construction activity is typically undertaken to meet, meet what is perceived by developers and builders as the market need. However, both the planning commission and city council have the ability to impact the type of housing products that are constructed in the community through the zone change process. Most new developments, other than single-family subdivisions, need a zone change in order to have the proper zoning to build the product type that developers want to build these days. So when considering zone changes, there really are three criteria that are embedded within the state law and embedded within our zoning code itself that both staff and planning commission and council should consider as we evaluate the appropriateness of any zone change. Let's see here. That's, Stephen, is that, oh, that's my bad. I got it. Thank you. The first criteria is that the rezoning conforms to the general plan, essentially to the land use plan. So what you have before you is the general, the land use plan of our 2030 general plan. And of course, we have various land use districts. The biggest one is the yellow, which is our neighborhoods land use district. In the neighborhoods, it's primarily intended to be single-family development. About 70% of the land in that yellow area is reserved for single-family residential development. About 20% of the land in that yellow area is allowed to hold medium-density and high-density residential developments of different types, and about 10% is allowed for neighborhood commercial. So one of the problems we're faced with is that in that yellow neighborhoods area, approximately 80% of it right now is vacant. So, you know, if you think about the city in general, the city has 100 square miles, a little over 100 square miles, of which a little over 25 square miles are developed. So essentially, three quarters of our city is, is vacant land. So we have a lot of land to accommodate new development. However, for single-family developments, each one today under a need certificates of assured water supply issued by the department, Arizona Department of Water Resources. And that is, right now, is a number that is locked in place, that Arizona Department of Water Resources have, are not allocating any additional cause for new residential subdivisions in the PNAO AMA, which we're part. There may be some ability for us to increase the number of single-family lots that can be developed in single-family subdivisions by using alternative water sources that do not require a certificate of assured water supply, like a DAWs, a water provider, like the city-owned water company, might be able to provide a water to the Copper Mountain Ranch development and expand the number of lots. But in general, the number of single-family subdivisions is kind of known at this time, and it's a finite number. I'll talk about that a little bit more. But the important part of that is even with the full build-out of every subdivision that has cause, where 60% of this yellow area is still going to be vacant. And so what that does is, as developers and landowners become aware of that fact, they start to think about what alternative land uses can I put my property to, to achieve some type of economic return. Many of them are looking to propose build-to-rent and medium-density and high-density developments. So that is one of the factors that is kind of driving some of our more recent permit and construction activity, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in this report. But that's certainly something that's, that's out there, and it's influencing what's happening in the community. The other thing to be aware of is with our 2030 general plan, we actually expanded the land use categories that different types of residential could be built in. So the blue is commerce and business. We expanded that to allow higher-density residential, higher-density apartments to be built as mixed-use projects within our commerce and business area. In our pink area, kind of, that's our community corridor, again, we expanded that to be a mixed-use kind of land use category, where both medium and high-density developments could occur in the pink area. In the core, the downtown area that you see, kind of in the light purple, that's our downtown area, and we actually encourage residential development of high-density development in our downtown area. So in general, it's, there's lots of opportunities to propose various types of residential developments in our land use categories and meet this criteria. This is not a high bar. This is a fairly easy criteria for developers to meet. The second criteria under the general, under the ARS and the city code is it, the rezoning action is consistent with the general plan, including our goals, policies, and applicable elements. And we, when writing the 2030 general plan and the housing element, we included a lot of, of information and action steps and goals regarding provision of housing. So one of the goals is to encourage variety in neighborhood design and development standards, and we have a series of action steps under that to provide variety of housing choice in our neighborhood areas for all income levels, generations, and housing demographics, to encourage a range of residential developing, development types, densities, and building design, and to increase the amount of medium-density housing within the city. I'm going to say that with, over the last few years, with the zoning decisions that have been made by planning commission and city council, I think we've done a good job of implementing almost all of these action steps. We've, as you'll see, we've approved a number of different types of housing products, including manufactured home parks, apartments and build-to-rent, and single-family neighborhoods of different lot sizes, all to meet these comprehensive plan goals. So I believe that every rezoning request that we've approved for residential developments have met both of these review criteria really well. One of the, some other general plan guiding principles are to increase the range of housing choices. We talked about that. But I would like to point out that we also have a guiding principle to support development of vacant infill lots for residential development, because those are really efficient and effective for the city to provide service to. Again, I think we've done a good job of doing that. On the top, you'll see a little triplex that was built on a little vacant lot in a existing neighborhood that allowed that medium density. That neighborhood happens to have a mix of single-family and duplexes in it. And in the bottom picture, you'll see a builder picked up a couple vacant lots and built some modest single-family homes on those lots, meeting the housing needs. So every day, we have people who contact us about, that they've identified infill lots, and they talk to us about what they can put on that lot for a new, not just single-family homes, but duplexes and triplexes and alternative housing types, including container homes as well. Another guiding principle that we have really is to encourage residential development in our downtown area as a way to really revitalize and re-energize downtown. And I think that's a solid principle, and I think that will work. You can see that we are about to have, start construction, the construction's about to start on the Florence and Ash subdivision. It's really fairly small lots. I believe it's zoned R2, they're all single-family, but they're fairly small lots, and they'll be modest housing, but they will be close to our downtown area. Hopefully, they'll be affordable workforce-type housing. And on the bottom of the screen, you can see the city-owned properties that we own, some vacant lots in our downtown area and our south side, where we're currently trying to collaborate with private developers to provide some workforce housing on those sites as well. The third and last rezoning criteria that needs to be considered by planning commission and city council and staff is that the proposed zone change is necessary and proper to meet the land use needs of the residents of the city. So although we are aware of this criteria at the staff level, and we do address it somewhat, I can say that we don't put the same emphasis on this review criteria as we do the other two related to the general plan. And the reason we haven't is because we really haven't had good quantifiable data that allowed us to really understand what the housing needs are in our community and what our supply is out there to meet those needs. So one of the purposes of this study is to really look really deeply into that question to the degree as possible. We try to answer these two questions. How many dwelling units are needed to meet the needs of our current and future residents, and what type of housing products are needed to meet that need as well? As we, as we studied that question, the first thing we did is we took a look at a snapshot of what are the housing types that have historically been provided in Casa Grande. So the source we looked at was the American Community Survey 2021. It's like an alternative or extension of the census survey stuff. It's pretty good data. What it told us was that historically, community-wide, Casa Grande, if you looked at all our housing, dwelling, housing types or dwelling types, 68% would be single-family, 16% were manufactured housing, and 16% were apartments. Now, that's across the history of the city, that's what we've provided as of 2021. So then, we then looked a little bit at what we've been permitting in 2023, and what we're constructing in the community in 2023. As you can see from the pie chart on the right, it's fundamentally different from the pie chart on the left. Single-family homes only represent 31% of the building permits that we're issuing today in terms of a ratio of residential dwelling types. 37% are apartments, and 28% are the new housing dwelling type called build-to-rent. The primary reason for this shift is, is likely that single-family homeownership has become less affordable due to increase in mortgage interest rates and increasing housing prices. It's, this is, you know, builder and developer activity is market-driven, and so that's what's happening in the market. And so developers are anticipating that those persons who are now priced out of the single-family home market will now rent an apartment or a build-to-rent unit.
Yes. So was that the mix in 2021, or was, meaning in terms of permitting, or was that the mix in terms of what we had in?
2021, that's the mix of what we had. But my next slide is going to show you a 10-year permitting window of what we've been permitting.
And this 23 is a permitting window?
Just this year.
Okay.
Yeah, from January 1st to October 31st.
Okay. Thank you.
The other interesting thing about this pie chart, and you're going to see that in the next slide, is that manufactured home permitting has actually been very consistent this year with prior years over the last 10 years. Really hasn't fluctuated very much. So this bar graph is a different way to look at some data. It's our building permit activity over the last 10 years. And so it's, it's from 2013 to basically October 31st, and again, it's, it's the building permits we've issued for different housing types. So a couple interesting observations about this data. The first is that up until this year, single-family home permits have been the dominant permit activity, right? Every year. Manufactured home permits have been pretty consistent during this timeframe, this 10-year timeframe, ranging, ranging from 71 per year to 137 per year. So that's a pretty consistent number. Virtually no apartments were constructed in Casa Grande since the completion of the Tierra Point apartment complex in 2011. So you can see through this 10-year period, no apartments were built. There are 700 units under construction right now in this community, but that's probably not, that, that's really addressing a little bit of a latent demand that's been building up, and the market is just now responding to it. I don't anticipate that next year, we're going to do another 700 apartments. I think that number will be higher than it has been historically, but it won't be this high. This is the first year that we've issued any permits for the build-to-rent type development as that is just now being introduced into our market. We are tracking that separate from, from the single-family homes. So the permits for both, for apartments have outstripped single-family in 2023. The permits for the build-to-rent have essentially equaled the single-family permits in 2023. The total number of permits issued for all residential dwelling types in 2023 will be in excess of 2,000. Still got about a month and a half to go, the end of the year, we're going to, we're going to have issued more than, building permits for more than 2,000 units, which is the highest number in the past 10 years of any year, and probably the highest number in the history of the city. So we are having a lot of residential development occur in this community. Probably due to the influx of people coming into the community, due to our success with economic development and job creation, is my, my, my estimate. The other interesting observation here is that the build-to-rent and apartment dwellings that are currently under construction won't be ready for occupancy to sometime in 2024. I mean, they're getting close, but after the first of the year, we'll probably get some occupancy. The time it will take for those developments to, to fill all of their new developments, their new units, is unknown. I mean, how long will it take to fill all those apartments and all those build-to-rent units? Don't know. My, my gut tells me that in 2024, my build-to-rent numbers will be lower, my apartment numbers will be lower, as those projects take time to fill up and developers apprise how well they do in the marketplace. Because those are kind of unknown factors at this point.
Do we get a report of how many they rent, or anything like that?
Just some.
Like when you're saying, we don't know how full they're going to be, like, do we know?
We, we have some general information. We have rental information specific on the Gavay House, because that's a, a tax increment finance project, so we know that one. It's going to be a little bit, little bit lower than market. So will Roar's, the one down on, on Truckle, be similar. The one on Comino Mercado, it's market. I don't know what those rents are, and I don't know exactly what the rents will be to the.
But do we know how many units they're renting? Like you said, you don't know how full they're going to be in how many years.
Well, well, they haven't rented any yet.
I know, I realize that, but do we get a report when they?
No, we, we don't. But in a few minutes, I'm going to give you a slide that tells you how many I think they're going to rent each year. Or at least over.
Just to note.
But no, we do not get that report.
Thank you.
Yes. So, you know, we've talked about what the 10-year trend has been from 2013 to 2023. That's the pie chart, pie chart on the left. Now they introduce build-to-rent, and so what it looks like, at least for now, that build-to-rent cut into the percentages for apartments and manufactured homes and kept single-family homes fairly constant. But of course, the mortgage rates were very low during most of this 10-year period. Staff, as we look at what do we think the ratio will be, let's say for the next seven years, between now and 2030, the pie chart on the right is our best estimate of that. We think single-family will continue to, to lead the way with about 60% of our permits, where the apartments being about 15%, manufactured home 15%, and build-to-rent about 10%. We think, as we look at all the units that are occupied over the next seven years, if we just took a seven-year snapshot, we think that's the market for the next seven years. Now, lots of things can happen in the market. Interest rates can go up, and that, if that does that, single-family percentages will go down, interest rates go down, the single-family percentage is going to go up, right? So it's market-driven, but assuming no big changes in the housing costs and interest rates, the pie chart on the right is the mix we think we're going to be getting through the building permit process. So what is the right mix for us, and how do we compare to the mix of other communities, the housing mix? To answer that question, we again looked to the American Community Survey data for 2021, and we looked at these communities on the screen, and as you can see, there's a, there's a pretty wide range of, of the mix in different communities. I'll use City of Maricopa, for example. You can see it was almost exclusively single-family home, but if you've driven through Maricopa lately, you'll see that they have probably the same number of apartment developments and units under construction as we do right now. So if I looked at this data five years from now, I think the multi-family in Maricopa would be higher. I don't know, it might 5% or whatever it would be, but clearly it's going to be higher, because that market is changing there. Had the ability to be in Goodyear yesterday, driving through Goodyear, and noticed that they do have a number of build-to-rent projects that are constructed and being occupied. They seem to be doing well in the market. There's some, from some of the same developers that are building, build-to-rent in our market, and they have multi-family under construction. So I assume that if I looked at this number today for Goodyear, the percentage for single-family would be down, multi-family probably be up, a build-to-rent would be up. We look at Chandler, obviously Chandler is heavy on the multi-family. There's, there's reasons with the demographics for that to occur. We've talked about Casa Grande. If we go over to Mesa, we're kind of looking a little bit closer to what Mesa looks like, I would say. And then you see Apache Junction, and we're, we're still quite a ways away from the mix that Apache Junction has as of this date. So, but I guess the point is, is that each of these communities have a different mix. That mix is somewhat driven by market, but it's also driven by the rezoning decisions that their planning commission and their city council make for different housing types, the availability of, of land. So we wanted to take a look at what is the existing supply in Casa Grande as of today to meet new development needs for various housing types. So we looked at the single-family. So single-family homes is actually, in, like I mentioned, it's kind of a finite number, because you have to have cause to, to build a new single-family subdivision. We know that we currently now have about 19,000 vacant lots with cause. I just read, worked the numbers today to figure out how many, I have to take out of the inventory, because they've been built. About 2,900, almost 3,000 of those are lots that already have final plats, which means they can, they're in the building permit process every day. So 30,000 of them are already final-platted, and they can be having active building activity today. About 12,000, about 13,000 of them are, only have approved preliminary plats, not final plats, so they need to go to the final plat stage, get a final plat approved by city council before they can start pulling building permits. Of the 13,000 in the preliminary plat stage, about 5,000 of them right now are in our pipeline for conversion to final plats. So the market is sensing that, you know, that 3,000 lots with final plats is going to be consumed in the near future, and more single-family lots need to be created, be final-platted, and those in fact are in the system moving forward. Some of them are moving forward with your new R2 zoning. Some are moving forward with increased amount of lots based on an analysis of their current water usage through ADWR in conjunction with the new state law that allows that cause number to be increased slightly if they can show that they're using less water than the original cause allocation. But essentially, you have 5,000 of them moving into the final plat stage. We do have 3,100 condominium lots out there, which is something that I'm hoping that a developer builds in sometime in the near future, because I think that's a product type that simply is not being provided in our current marketplace. So then we went to look at the apartments supply, and here's what we found in the apartments. I'll go to the total for a minute and I'll back into it. So we found, we saw that there's a total of about 4,200 potential apartment units that can be built on ground that's already zoned for them. So we have 1,482 projects, developments that represent 1,482 apartment units that are already have approved major site plan. They're now in the permitting stage. Some of them are under construction, some are Gabe House and Roar's and Comino Mercado. There are ones that are actually in construction, just not occupied. But at 1,482, they're in administrative review for building permits and for site plan, site developments and public improvements, but they just need administrative permit approval to go to construction. You have 2,753, you have sites that can potentially produce 2,753 new apartments that are already been zoned. They've been zoned by council, they're in place, they have not yet achieved a major site plan approval. They can do that with planning commission approval as long as they meet all of the city code requirements for major site plan, but they can move from the zone condition to major site plan and then to building. What this, what the ones that are zoned, the data here does not reflect anything that's in the pipeline that's under review right now, that has not been at a hearing by planning commission or not approved by council. So for example, tonight at your council meeting, you are going to hear both a multifamily rezoning and a build-to-rent rezoning. Neither of those are reflected in this data. I can also tell you that when we looked at the multifamily zonings and tried to identify those sites, we looked at the sites that we knew were readily available, they were properly zoned, and they had pretty much all the infrastructure needed to move forward. They had streets, they had water, they had sewer, they were pretty much what we'll call shovel-ready, ready to move to the major site plan and permitting stage. There are other sites that have been zoned historically that we are not in this data set, so the actual numbers is higher than this. But this is conservative. You have definitely enough projects, you have projects zoned that can accommodate essentially 4,235 new apartment complexes. When they go to manufactured home parks, their numbers are more solid in terms of, I know, this is like the total data set. And so we have 944 units that are, have approved major site plan that are in the permitting process today, and we have another 1,521 that have already been zoned that can be, have major site plan approval and move to permitting as well. Under build-to-rent, you can see those numbers, we have 1,560 that are a major site plan approved, and some of those are under construction, some of those are the Hancock development and the bungalows at Cottonwood and the bungalows by the Walmart building, by the Walmart development. So it's those plus a few others that are just still just raw dirt, but all of those are ability to move to permitting and to meet the product need for whatever, whatever the need is for that product type. And there's about 1,300, excuse me, 3,200 units in that category. So that's our supply. Now to try to answer the question, what is the need? And the need is, of course, driven by population growth. So the first thing we did is we tried to figure out what our current population is. And these numbers, I keep a running tally each year based on building permits issued by the various product types you see on the right, single-family, multifamily, manufactured home, build-to-rent. And so I know how many of those building permits we've issued, we know the average persons per household, it's pretty easy math to figure out what the population increase in any given year. This data tells us that currently, we have approximately 72,000 residents in our, in our community. Now, if you look at the census data, you can see the census data is lower than that. And the reason why the census data is lower than my population estimates is because the census data is a permanent residence. My data is a permanent and seasonal residence because every seasonal resident needs a place to live. So we have total building permits for both whoever's going to occupy, whether it's a permanent resident, a seasonal resident, but approximately we have 72,000 residents in our community today that we need to meet the housing needs for. You see these growth rates on the right column, those are very, very high growth rates, those are unsustainable for the future, but they are, but they are what we've experienced in those years, based on building permits. But of course, some of the things that are issuing building permits for are for multiple year of growth, for resident growth. So to project how many houses, what our housing need is the next seven years for 2030, we took the population increase and multiplied it by the percentage of, of the type of units that we think that each of those residents will want to live in, the 60%, 15, 15, 10, that was in that pie chart. And we see there on the right, that's how many units we need in each of these categories to meet that population increase. Now, those numbers are accurate. If the housing mix assumptions stay accurate, if those change, then the numbers just change across the board. Population doesn't change, it's just the unit types change. But you can see, that's our projection of how many units we need to meet that, that need for the next seven years. That represents about 8,000 new dwelling units that need to be constructed over the next six years, which averages about 1,300 new dwelling units per year. You know, I just told you, we're going to build 2,000 this year, right? So 1,300 is not, it's, you know, that's pretty reasonable for us, actually. That's realistic number, in my opinion. So then, let's look at quickly what our supply is versus what's been zoned or major site plan approved versus what our need is. You can see the comparison. We have 19,000 single-family lots that can meet our need. We only have need for 4,000, we're in good shape there. We have about 4,200 multifamily sites already zoned or major site plan approved. We think we need about 1,400 for the next seven years. Now, I would never tell you that your supply and your need columns should be equal. I would tell you that your supply column should be about double what your, what your need is, because you want the market to be able to figure out, you want some competition, you want the market to make choices on which projects to build and which ones not to build. Obviously, they don't all get built for other reasons, like financial, financial reasons from a developer standpoint. But you can see you have, you have probably three times more multifamily supply than you have need for the next seven years, so you're in good shape there. Manufactured home parks about double, you're in good, good shape there. On build-to-rent, you have a lot more build-to-rent units approved than what your need is based on a 10% absorption, 10% market share. That share goes to 20%, that number is 1,600. That's kind of a wild card, in my opinion, because we don't know what the market absorption's going to be for the build-to-rent products. We just ran these same numbers out into 2040 and 2050. The assumption we made on, on the population growth was we're adding 3,000 people per year. You know, we've had, we've had years where we've added more than 3,000 people, but that seemed like a pretty, a fairly conservative number. I think it's a realistic number. So if you look at this, you can see how many units we need to meet that population in 2040. This tells us how we're doing with our supply to meet that need. Again, we're still good with our single-family, assuming those preliminary plats are now converting to final plats that we looked at, which seems to happen automatically in this, in the market. Now, the multifamily units in this year, in this particular year, we're now need more multifamily to meet the need. We need more manufactured home parks by 2040 to meet the need. And for a build-to-rent, we probably still have adequate supply to meet what is the anticipated demand. We did this again to 2050, and obviously, my crystal ball becomes less clear the further out in the future I go. But it's my best, my best work, my best guess for you, but there's a lot of assumptions here. I wouldn't take this to the bank. So that was kind of a summary of what we believe are our housing needs, our housing supply to meet those needs, giving our, the kind of products that are currently being supplied in the mark, in our, in our community. But I want to let you know about some other work that staff, planning staff is doing to address alternative housing demands. And all of these things I'm going to describe are going to involve changes to our zoning code, which will be back both to planning commission and council, more in-depth at a future study session. I just want to give you a taste for what we're working on. We're working on allowing accessory dwelling units on lots that contain single-family homes. There'll be some standards on that. This, what you're seeing in this photo right here is actually a accessory dwelling unit that's been built in Casa Grande, and it's like in a lot that, R2 lot that allowed two units anyway. It's not a single-family zoned lot, but that's essentially what a lot of accessory dwellings might look like. They'll be limited in size, have a certain demographic that they're trying to meet the housing needs for. We're probably going to recommend that the accessory dwelling units can be detached like this or attached, connected to the house itself. So we'll be looking at that, which is a good segue into the multi-generational homes, which essentially do have a small apartment in, in the house where it can be, you know, they're sometimes, you know, described as mother-in-law apartments, they could be a son-in-law apartment, they could be, they could be, anyone really could rent the.
Paul, we allow that now, but is it, do they have to kind of jump through some hoops to get it?
They do, Mayor. We did a PAD amendment to allow it, and one PAD, I believe, but we want to broaden that out citywide.
Okay.
That's our idea.
Okay.
And so we're also looking at allowing manufactured homes, container homes and tiny homes on individual lots that can be owner-occupied. So I'm not talking about in a park, talking about you can put a manufactured home on a vacant infill lot. We're looking at specific areas of the city where that might be appropriate and the standards. What the example on the bottom is actually in Casa Grande, and it looks really good to me as an alternative housing type that we should probably be providing for our residents. We'll be looking at allowing multiple container homes and tiny homes to be constructed on one lot, similar to like a build-to-rent project, which is all stick-built, but these will be more of a different demographic and a different type of, of construction. So we're working on zoning code text amendments for, for all of those that we would intend to bring back in the fairly short term, within the next, you know, let's say four to six months, we would have those all in place. That's, that's our intent.
And Paul, if that kind of information would be amazingly critical for me as I go to the legislature. So as you develop it, and I know Larry and I had this conversation today, to have that in hand and/or help communicate that information to our legislators.
Right.
So hopefully, we can kind of meet them at the pass, cut them off, so they don't try and pass some legislation that's
Sure.
not helpful to our cause and, because we're already working on this, right? So.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. You know, we've talked tonight about the supply and demand that we, that we found in the community and that we're, but I want to let you know that as we analyze zone change requests, supply-demand is going to be important for us to look at, but there's other aspects of, of developments that need to be considered as well. For example, if you have an apartment complex that's being financed with low-income housing tax credits, and you know those rents are going to be more affordable, you should probably be thinking about prioritizing that, giving that a little bit higher consideration. If it's an infill development, you should probably be giving that a little bit higher consideration. If it's downtown and reacting to revitalize our downtown, that's another important goal that it's not only just meeting a housing need, it's actually revitalizing downtown as well. So that should get kind of bonus points in my mind. You know, we talked about this review criteria, proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the residents. Now that staff has quantitative data on the needs and supply of various housing products, we intend to more actively apply this criteria to zone change requests and, and have it influence the recommendations that we make, both to planning commission and to city council as we analyze new zone changes. Staff will be presenting the same study to planning commission at their December 7th meeting, so that both planning commission and city council have the same information regarding this topic. And so with that, I'm going to stop and be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I want to jump in here first. Paul, great work. This is exactly really what we were looking for, or at least I was looking for, I'm assuming my fellow council members would agree. Excellent work, excellent, excellent, excellent. And as I said earlier, this is the kind of stuff that I really need to take to legislature and really need to do it soon, because they're already dropping their bills. And, and I, and I, it also will help our city, obviously, and that's the main reason that we're doing it. But, you know, to have this kind of information and know the mix, I feel much more comfortable today on, on what our housing mix is in the city. Obviously, we need to continue to work on it and continue to use that as a guiding light, if you will, and obviously for your department as well. So thank you for all that hard work and to your staff, to everybody who helped you work on it. So.
Thank you.
And I know it doesn't happen in a vacuum, so, so appreciate it. So a big thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any some comments? Matt?
We got a couple. One thing that's important for people to understand, and you hit it at the beginning, is the certificate of assured water supply or the cause. And we get a lot of questions about that, about these build-to-rens and the multifamilies. And the short answer is, we as a city don't have control over the certificates of assured water. That's a state law that we are trying to affect, but is very difficult to do. So at this time, that's why we go through a lot of these things, because we have no control over the five subdivisions of a lot law. And then the manufactured housing stuff that you got, and I have an idea in my head, but I don't want to make any assumptions, but how many of those are 55-plus? I mean, I would guess a very high percentage, but do you know that?
Not off the top of my head, but I would say it's probably 90%.
That's about what I was figuring. But maybe we could get that information just to help us, because the stuff that you got here that you gave us was great. It's going to help me and probably most of us to make these decisions going forward when we're seeing these zoning things. And maybe if you guys and your staff would, when, when we're seeing these cases, say, hey, by the way, this is what the mix is right now, and this new one will bump it a little or not bump, you know, just so we can see at the, in real time, like, hey, is this going to really throw off one of our, our metrics for planning? And then, when you were looking at these other cities, I think you said Goodyear, so it's a little more established with multifamily and build-to-rent. Have you heard in your industry, does the build-to-rent, because it's such a new product, does it detract, not detract, but take away occupancy from multifamily?
You know, that's a great question. What, is it, the, the, the people who want to rent a build-to-rent, are those simply the people who can't? the people who can't afford a single-family home and want to continue living in a rental home? Or are they people who are in a rental market and just don't want to live in an apartment, right?
Yeah.
I can't answer that question.
It'd be interesting if we can try to get that because.
I have, I have heard, I have heard from builders, from the builders of these single-family for rent product, and these are, now, these are builders who build product up in the valley, that majority of their renters are young people. So it's, it's first time, you know, it's maybe not an apartment, but now you step up to that first level homeownership thing because it's kind of like a home, but you're renting and then, then they move out and.
Because that would change our supply mix, you know, into the future if, because the build-to-rent is much higher on supply and the multifamily is much lower, but if that balances out, we might still be again.
Good, yeah.
Your crystal ball is pretty foggy that far out, but. And then lastly, I liked what you said at the end, and I've been to so many seminars and conferences and especially Lisa and I have talked about this at the stuff, is the one tool we have as a council for, you hit it at the end, the affordable homes, the, the workforce homes is our zoning because the city doesn't build houses. We don't build affordable houses. We don't build multifamily houses, but we do have the tool to zone and encourage them where to go and how to develop. So that's the important part about all this to help us again, make those decisions because we don't build them, but we can encourage certain parts through our zoning laws, which you started with. And so I appreciate that, how people understand. Thank you.
Donna?
Just a couple of things. I'm glad you asked about the fifty-five plus because that was one of my questions. But I was asked a question this afternoon. I just need clarification on when we talked about the city growth and you had mentioned for 2023, the seventy-one thousand plus that included the seasonal residents. Somebody asked me a question, does that include our travelers? And my first thought was no. By travelers, I meant people that have fifth wheels that have.
Doesn't include any of that.
Only if they own the property, correct?
Correct.
Owner rent.
Right. Right. So typically, you know, it could be single-family home, it could be that they're, have a park model. It could be that the men, that they are going to rent one of these build-to-rents, right? First, for, you know.
And that's why I thought that they specifically was talking about Palm Creek that have both. And so that's why I just need clarification. Thank you.
Bob?
Yeah, Paul, first of all, thank you. This is extremely enlightening and it is encouraging that, that the, the market-based development seems to have been working pretty well. We, we seem to be a very balanced community and on the right track to stay that way. I wanted to point out that one of the things we learned in seminar at the League of Cities was on homelessness. They, they said, number one, take an inventory of your existing housing because when that is limited, that, that situation flows downhill and you may have people that just, just can't find something in their price range and they end up sleeping in their car. So I, I see this very encouraging for our, for our city. Also, I, I wanted to, to point out, a, a lot of people think that, that we make the decisions on how many apartments to add, how many build-to-rent, how many mobile home. And this, even though these inventories may ebb and flow, that doesn't empower us to, to say no to a development just because the inventory is a little off, does it? I mean, I'm assuming it does not, but.
It, it, well, maybe is the answer. You know, let's see if I go back to the.
It's a prerogative.
Yeah. So if you think about that, that criteria, is the zone change needed to meet the needs of the community right there, right? That's one of the three criteria that you need to find to prove a zone change. So if you think that, you know, whatever product is being proposed for you through a rezoning, that you have adequate amount of that product in the community to meet the needs of the community, I believe you can vote no on the zone change because of, on that criteria. And I'm going to look to the city attorney over there, see if he concurs with me. I think he probably would, but, but I haven't discussed it specifically with him.
Zoning is always a legislative decision for you, right? I mean, to determine, you know, whether to make it, and that's always going to be the policy decision that you have. I think the presentation tonight was designed to give you some of that information so you can make those policy decisions.
Right, exactly.
Because you're going to always have developers who, especially without cause, coming in and saying, I'd like you to do this build-to-rent. But if you think your community already has enough and you think this area is better served as single-family, whether it's today or 20 years from now, you always have the ability to say, we're not ready to do that. So you're going to have to balance those in terms of, you know, what development you have, especially if you get towards the end of those nineteen thousand, you know, lots, right? Where it'll be, you no longer have that single-family mix and you'll have to decide whether your community is full or whether you want to continue to develop through alternative housing.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the scary part is that we'll only still have, we'll still have sixty percent of the single-family for rent land still available when we kind of run out of cause. So Lisa?
You know, and I'm glad you're on this slide because I think that's the, where we are, the critical part, you know, where we are right now. I mean, you know, we, we, I'm, Paul, this is great study, so thank you very much. I know, you know, we, as, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission, because I've read many of their minutes, you know, we've been approving these projects, but we want to know what is our vision? Like, how do we see us, you know, in 20, 30, 40 years from now? And so the decisions that we're making today are obviously going to affect that and, and what we become in a few years. So I'm glad to see where we are with the, the supply and the demand and where we're going. And I think we, we need to be strategic, you know? We, we see what the product mix is now, so I think this is really helpful to, to see, okay, is, are we comfortable with this or do we think we need to lighten a little bit on, on certain areas? The build-to-rents, I think with this study are showing to me that maybe we're, we're where we are, need to be at this point. You know, maybe 10, 20 years from now, we, we increase that, but at this point, you know, maybe, you know, this is a, is a good number. So I think visiting that product mix and the percentage and make sure that's what we want to do, but I, I think it's okay to, to say no. I mean, you know, like because, because of this right here, if we feel that there's just too much of a certain, you know, product, I think it's okay for us to say, you know what, hold on, let's just try to, you know, build and develop these existing, you know, projects and then see where we are. So I was just really happy with this. I'm really happy to see some of the alternative housing things that you're bringing forward, the infill. We've talked about infill for year, you know, a couple of years now, so I think those projects and, and again, you know, we might feel that, you know, right now, we might not want to want to move on a manufactured home project, but if it's the right place, then maybe we do. Again, be strategic and see, you know, where, you know, where the right place is for the right development. So, and, and where we are, you know, with multi-generational, you know, people are moving home with their families. So I love the, the detached homes and the tiny homes. So thank you so much for, for just, you know, just, I mean, you, I mean, I know these are the trends going on all over the country, but thank you for addressing it, knowing where we are, things that we've done great and things that we need to do moving forward. So I'm really happy with this and I think, you know, again, I think we, we do need to talk a little bit about that product mix or where we want to go moving forward. So, but, but again, you know, great study and I really, really appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Just real quick to what Lisa said, thank you for putting Apache Junction on there because everyone talks about that and we're, we're pretty far off percentage-wise from the.
Way off.
But I mean, it's good for, we didn't really know, right? I mean, I figured they had more than we did, but.
So don't call us Apache Junction anymore. Okay. All right. Thank you again to you, Paul and staff for great work. So thank you. All right, we're going to stand adjourned for not very long, about three minutes and we'll start again. Thank you.